Good evening. This meeting on March 9, 2015 of the Dubuque Community School Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Batine?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Ms. Speaker?
Here.
Mr. Strelo?
I approve the -- I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
First of all, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you have to.
We have Washington Middle School Student Council here to lead us in the pledge. Come on forward.
Hi, I'm Kathryn Burns and I'm an eighth grader.
Hi, I'm Susan. I'm also in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Anna Chanley and I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Simon Burns and I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Gavin Guns and I'm in sixth grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Now you can go.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 9 and the strategic plan update on February 23, 2015, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 9 and the strategic plan update on February 23, 2015, as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. That leads us to Board Salutes. We will start with you, Jim. Do you have one?
Yep. Congratulations to the Washington Middle School eighth grader, Sebani Rahm. She is here tonight, by the way.
She is one of our.
She is one of our Pledge of Allegiance. Congratulations for winning the Iowa Patriots Pen Writing Competition and placing 14th out of 110,000 participants across the United States in the national competition. The contest is sponsored nationally by the VFW and Sebani was sponsored by the VFW opposed 9663 in Dubuque. So congratulations.
Wow, congratulations. Great.
I've got one.
All right.
Kudos to the senior high school speech team for bringing home three Critics' Choice banners out of 12 at the recent Iowa High School Speech Association Large Group All-State Festival. The team won banners in group mime, musical theater, and radio broadcasting. Congratulations as well to those ensembles as well as the other all-state selections from senior and Hampstead. Terrific. Madam President, I have one. Congratulations to Brian Keck. He's a seventh grader at Eleanor Roosevelt Middle School who won the 28th Annual TH Media Spelling Bee this past weekend. Brian will now represent our region at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC in May. By the way, the winning word, ambidextrous, which I don't think I could spell, so.
Much less say it.
I know what it means.
And Sebani actually finished in third place. She was our winner last year.
Wow.
So she's having a big night here at the school.
She can just take over. All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. I think we'll start with, we've got Phil Burkard is going to present the Senior High Repointing Project first.
Hey, remember Superintendent Allen Guns? You may remember the area to be repointed at Senior High School is the foreign language, auto, and welding shop areas. Another way to describe it is from the smokestack going towards the parking lot and it ends on that outside southeast corner. It's a multi-story building there. People also call it tech building. The purpose for this project is to stop water from getting in the classrooms. It's bubbling the paint, it's damaging the floors, and soon it'll damage the projectors and electronics in the ceilings if we don't get this under control soon. We'll also do some repair to the damaged parapet walls above the area I just described. If it's approved, it'll be paid for using our summer 2015-16 summer Pebble money.
Great, thank you. No motion? Do you want to read the motion?
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing on Senior High Repointing Project 2015 and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015 and authorize payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Anybody want to have any discussion on our project? None? Okay.
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. And we go again.
On February 13, 2015, nine bids were received for the Senior Repoint Project. They were opened and read aloud shortly after 2:00 p.m. and there were no bid irregularities. Those bids are: R&amp;W Restoration, $163,500; Innovative Masonry Restoration, $181,200; Fred Jackson Tuck Pointing, $192,660; Superior Masonry Restoration, $199,400; Evans Mason, Inc., $217,850; Building Restoration Corporation, $238,754; TNT Tuck Pointing and Building Restoration, $239,600; E&amp;H Restoration LLC, $274,307; and By State Masonry, $295,094. IAW's probable cost for the project was $208,000. After checking references of the lowest bidder, Billings and Grounds supports the letter of recommendation that you'll find in your bid packet to award the contract to R&amp;W Restoration, a Dubuque company.
Great, thank you. Do you need a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015. Whereas on the 12th day of January 2015, plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total costs were initially filed with the Secretary for the construction of certain public improvements described in general as the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015. And whereas, a notice of hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for said public improvements was published as required by law. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the set plans, specifications, form of contract, and the estimated total cost for the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015 are hereby approved and adopted as the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for said public improvement as described in the preamble of this resolution.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution adopting plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated total cost of the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015 as read. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. I think we can just go right on to the motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution making a ward of construction contract. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, Section 1, that the following bid for the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015 described in the plans and specifications heretofore adopted by this board is accepted. The same being the lowest responsive, responsible bid received for such work as follows. Contractor, R&amp;W Restoration LLC of Dubuque, Iowa. Amount of base bid, $163,500. Section 2, that the President and Secretary are hereby directed to execute a contract with the contractor. Such contract not to be binding on the district until approved by this board.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution making a ward of construction contract for the Senior High School Repointing Project 2015 to R&amp;W Restoration LLC of Dubuque, Iowa, in the amount of $163,500 as read. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, that takes us to Visitors in Open Forum.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anybody want to have anything to discuss? All right.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to have removed? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Clicking right along. That takes us now to?
Facilities.
Facilities.
I'm going to apologize ahead of time for my voice. I'm struggling to find it from last week. But we just have a few motions, facilities, and support services. We discussed donations that need to be approved by the Board because they're such a large amount. And then also some fee schedules for the upcoming school year. I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Carver School Parent Teacher Group for soccer standards and equipment for Carver School in memory of a Carver student in the amount of $3,640.45.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Carver School Parent Teacher Group for soccer standards and equipment for Carver School in memory of a Carver student in the amount of $3,640.45. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Kennedy School Parent Staff Association for a swing set to be placed on the playground at Kennedy School in the amount of $3,800.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation from Kennedy School Parent Staff Association for a swing set to be placed on the playground at Kennedy School in the amount of $3,800. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the facility rental fee schedule for the 2015-2016 school year. Is there any discussion?
I just have, I assume that we take a look at that every year to some extent?
We do. It's passed every year. There are two pieces, I think, that, one, generate a little discussion in the meeting. There's the policy, which determines who is subject to which fee, and then there are the fees themselves. This is just the fee. Policy Committee will have a conversation at some point in the future about who or which groups are subject to which fees based on their status as nonprofits and there's, well, we'll discuss it when we get to policy, but I know that generated some questions in the meeting, so.
Thank you.
And really the big increase was just the gyms, right? The air conditioning gyms.
Okay. The other? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2015-16 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the student fee schedule for the 2015-2016 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2015-16 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2015-2016 school year. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Directors, the Dubuque Community School District, the district will be accepting proposals to sell and have removed from the property a home located at 2512 Pennsylvania Avenue, Dubuque, Iowa 52001. Whereas it is appropriate pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 297.22, to publish a notice of the proposed conveyance of the hearing and to receive and consider objections and petitions. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that this board shall set a public hearing on the conveyance of the above described property for May 11, 2015 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road in Dubuque, Iowa. Section 2, that the Secretary is authorized and directed to prepare, publish, and distribute the notice of hearing.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of accepting proposals to sell and remove from the property a home located at 2512 Pennsylvania Avenue, Dubuque, Iowa 52001 as read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Maintenance Department Storage Building Project and set the date, time, and location as April 13, 2015 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Maintenance Department Storage Building Project and to set the date, time, and location as April 13, 2015 at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
All right. I move that the Board of Education approve the gift agreement for the Bryant School Historic Window Replacement Project.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the gift agreement for the Bryant School Historic Window Replacement Project. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would, certainly this is a project worthy of discussion and highlighting a little bit. We were approached about a month and a half, two months ago, about the possibility of replacing the windows that currently exist at Bryant Elementary School. If you're familiar with that school, back in the 70s during the energy crisis, about half, half of the windows were replaced with a, with a solid panel and the windows were cut in half. Changing the, significantly changing the outlook of the, the appearance of the building on the outside as well as the amount of light that was able to come into the, to the school. Certainly windows have come a long way during that time and so the, John and Alice Butler approached the district about our desire to have those windows replaced and restored to their historic look. The added bonus, and there are several of them, is that the current windows, even though they'll be much larger than, or the replacement windows are much larger than the current windows, the R-value or the insulation effect will actually provide better insulation than what's there now, what was replaced in the 70s. So you've got added heat loss, I'm sorry, you've got reduced heat loss in the wintertime. The windows will also open from the top and the bottom, creating, as they tell me, a chimney effect, which will create a cooler environment on the, on the hot days. And certainly the desire of the gift was to create a look of prominence of the building, so there will be some lighting that goes along with this that is time period correct. It'll be, there'll be LED, but they will be time period correct from the building. It's going to really be a beautiful project. The total cost, or the total donation is $780,000. It's a significant undertaking to replace the windows in that building and it's certainly something that we would struggle to ever find taxpayer dollars to do. So the generosity of the Butlers is certainly something that will improve the, the building at Bryant, both from the outward appearance within the, within the neighborhood, but also for those students. I mean, there is a great added benefit to having as much natural light as possible in our buildings and this certainly will change the, that natural light that's available to our students. So we're very excited about this project and clearly are, we're thankful to John and Alice Butler for their generosity with this project.
Well, I know in the conversations that I've had in the past with John and Alice Butler that they are very passionate about the historical buildings in Dubuque and a way of, finding a way of maintaining them. So this is a generous gift and I believe, I was told that John Butler went to Bryant Elementary School, so I think that's a kind of a nice, for his alma mater, and they are very passionate about public education. I do know that as well. So I think this is a very generous gift and I thank them on behalf of the Board. It's a wonderful gift.
If you haven't been there for a while, take a moment and drive past the building as it exists now. This, this work should take place this summer and will be, everything will be fully restored by the time the students come back in the fall. So if you haven't viewed the building in a while, drive past it just so that you'll be able to drive past it when it's completed and see the significantly different look this building will have.
I hope we get some before and after pictures.
I think there are some that already exist. We certainly will get some that are in process. It does, one thing worth bearing, you will notice that we won't follow all of the same bidding procedures that we do with most of other projects because this is 100% financed through a donation that does, no taxpayer dollars are spent. Everything from the architectural work to the, to the purchase and replacement of the windows is paid for through this donation. That alleviates some of the timelines that we would have to follow, which will make it possible to get this done yet this summer.
Tom?
I handle a lot of gifting through my financial practice and humble donors will oftentimes say, "Ah, you know, I gotta, I did it because I got a tax write-off." I'm here to say there's no, the best way to wind up with the most money in your pocket after a gift is to not give the gift. So this is, this is a hugely generous gift on the part of the Butlers. Overwhelmingly generous. And I'm, I'm blown away by it personally.
I know.
Blown away. A taxing body getting a gift of this nature. And, and the Butlers are, we've had some other great gifts too. This is as fine a gift as I can remember. We've had some other very, very charitable-minded folks in the community step up.
It all helps.
But this is sensational. I mean, John and Alice are absolutely to be commended.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, that takes us on to these education programs.
Our Ed Programs Committee, very briefly, just to recap, met on March 3. We had a presentation on school work from Lori Anderson where the district was named one of five pilot sites in the state to be, to involve in the METS program, which is a model employment transition site to enhance career planning resources. We also met, had a presentation on Summit Program, a couple other school to work programs. We discussed the school calendar very briefly and we did look at several of the policies. One of them was in regard to quorum for meetings, minutes of board meetings, handling grievances and complaints, and the rules of order. We don't have to stand up to be recognized anymore.
That's good.
And then lastly, we discussed, we had Lynn and David explain to us the new teacher mentoring program, which is a new program which is being implemented in our district this year. So with that, we'll move on. It's a calendar. Stan will take over.
Drum roll.
All right, so the much anticipated, as soon as I figure out how to unmute. Much anticipated, much delayed calendar. So just a short recap historically, so what we have, what we have been in the habit of doing for the last couple of years is develop a calendar, talk about it at subcommittee, and then put it out for large-scale community input, sending it, putting it on our website, also notifying people in the media that it's available. We gather input for a couple of weeks. Mike Size then tabulates that input. We have conversation about that input and come back with any changes or to the recommended calendar. So we did all of that. We had a public hearing. We invited folks to come and speak to the calendar. I think we had one speaker, three people, but one person spoke about the calendar. We then decided to delay it because the, this calendar is significantly different than what we've had in the past because of some changes at the state level. The state has decided to no longer honor waivers except for very specific reasons and those reasons quite honestly are not attainable by any district from, from the way I understand the way those waivers will be, will be read. But we stopped short of approving the calendar because there's a lot of talk in Des Moines about a compromise, about school start date, and we thought that at that point in February there was maybe some imminent action that would take place. So we postponed this decision for two weeks until our strategic planning update. At that meeting, we thought, well, we'll wait two more weeks. I'm here to tell you today, there has been no significant movement this, around the school start date. So knowing that some of our service providers, our daycare providers, as well as families eagerly await our release of the calendar because they plan their, their summers around it, they plan next school year around it based on vacations and childcare issues and all those sorts of things. So this is the calendar that was proposed once before. When we put this calendar out for public input, the thing that most people commented on was the end date, which at that time was June 6. The earliest we can start by statute is the 1st of September. Actually, we could have started on the 31st of August, but we do an orientation day that day. That's the first day we get an orientation. We start school on the 1st. And then that pushes us back to, would have pushed us back to an end date of June 6. There was much, not much concern, but the comments we did receive were about that end date and could we move that to the 3rd, which we were able to accommodate by removing the, we, initial calendar had the 25th of November, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as a day, a non-school day. We added that back as a school day, which then allowed us to move the last day of school until June 3. I'm sure that will be one of the historic years where we have no snow days and we'll actually have the last day of school be June 3. Of most particular note is the test movements away from our traditional graduation on Memorial Day weekend. We have seniors must have by statute 175 days of school. You are allowed to waive up to five days for seniors or the same number of hours depending upon how you calculate your calendar. That does not make it possible for us to get a Memorial Day graduation date.
I know.
I'm not sure, pending any other questions, one of the things you may notice on your calendar is a half-circle day on the 28th of August. That is a day that we, that the Teacher Quality Committee, which is a committee composed of teachers and administrators, they receive additional funds from the state to spend on professional development. And so we decided to add a half of a day of professional development prior to the start of the school year, not funded by the general fund, but funded by Teacher Quality Committee.
Stan, I know that we talked a fair amount about the change from the number of days of instruction to the number now of hours of instruction. Was that helpful in giving you more flexibility? And was the net, net result of that actually a benefit ultimately in this calendar?
Well, the benefit of that is looking at the length of our days and looking at, making sure that all students received a minimum number of educational hours and then building a calendar that's beyond that. Our contracts are still based on days and so we're still kind of using a little bit of a hybrid. So certainly, you know, we take the hours into account. We don't have ultimately total flexibility with, with the hours yet. So that has to come through part of the negotiation process because our contract So that has to come through part of the negotiation process because our contracts are based on days.
I'd like to just make a comment. Originally, when this came out, we were told to have the later start date. You know, I was concerned about some of the things like semester ending. We already know a little bit about the standardized testing, some of these things. And I was kind of waiting, kind of hopefully to make the school year start a little earlier. But in talking to people, talking to teachers and people in the public and looking at maybe some of these temperature situations starting a little bit later, it seems that it's going to work out. I'm willing to give it a try so to speak and see what happens here this year.
Yeah. The bottom line is we'll go to school just as many days and hours next year as we do this year. And when we start, there are pros and cons. Certainly starting later has some heat issues potentially though it can certainly be hot in September. Some of the negatives would be it does create a few weeks less of education prior to the AP testing and some of the standardized testing and it does move the semester, makes it virtually impossible to have the semester end at the Christmas holiday break. So, you know, but we'll make it work.
And just so we know also, once we're adopting this calendar, we're not going to go back and rescind anything.
That would not be the recommendation but certainly the board as a whole would have the opportunity to do that.
No way.
I get the feeling that won't happen but I think you're correct.
Once big and twice shy. Right, Tammy?
You know, if there are changes and it does look like it, most of the legislative changes around education, whether it be allowable growth, whether it be calendar, whether it be one cent sales tax, are probably pushed back later in the session, April or May, which is too late for us to put out a calendar. So I would agree, would take something pretty earth shattering for me to recommend a change.
This is a perfect example as to why we always ask for local control because we know what works well for our calendar and for the state legisl, for the state, first it starts with the Board of Education to say they're not going to grant waivers, yet then they come back and the legislature gets involved and then says, "Well, we'll look at that. Maybe that isn't what we want to do." So they have us hanging on a hook and waiting and we just can't wait for them to make up, to decide and let that be a piece of their pawn, you know, to move around and we need to move on. We need to get this past us.
In my opinion, it's clearly a local control issue.
It should be.
And in the future, hopefully it will be again. This year, that's taken out of our hands a little bit but really, you know, the community elects seven of their peers to make decisions about school and certainly the calendar should be a local control issue.
There's less and less that the legislature lets us do. I mean, this is one thing that we know affects the people in our community. So this is a good reason why we say let's keep local control. All right. I need a motion then. Jim, are you going to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approve the 2015-16 school calendar as presented.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the 2015-2016 school calendar as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. That takes us to, can I find it here? We've got our proclamation for National Autism Month.
You want a motion?
Um, yes.
I move that the Board of Education approve the National Autism Awareness Proclamation and authorize the Vice President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the National Autism Awareness Proclamation and authorize the Vice President and Secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Before we vote, I will read it so we know what we're voting on. Whereas autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it and whereas, as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum resulting in rates as high as 1 in 68 children nationally. And whereas, while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it often is possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas, individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism presents. And whereas, an awareness effort is underway in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects and whereas, we urge all community members to participate in National Autism Awareness Month activities in order to become better educated on the subject of autism spectrum disorders. Now therefore I, Tammy Ryan, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month. Signed on this 9th day of March 2015. And I believe we have Jamie Culbertson here to say a few words about autism. I warrant you.
Oh, thanks, Jamie.
And I know you're prepared.
I'm always prepared. I am honored to accept the proclamation on behalf of my students who are all diagnosed with autism and many members of our community that are also diagnosed with autism. Like you said, right now there's one in every 68 children are diagnosed and it's important that as a community we raise awareness and develop understanding of autism within our school district and throughout the community and this proclamation is going to be a great step forward in order to do that. So thank you very much.
Madam President, if I may make a comment.
Please.
I'm hard pressed to find anyone these days who doesn't either have, within their family or know someone who has a child perhaps within the ADS, the ASD spectrum. And this is, this is very important to me personally but it's also to let people know that these kids can accomplish a great deal if given the opportunity. And the case in point, my oldest son Spencer, who is just recently turned 23 years old, not only was diagnosed with autism as a three-year-old but has, is nearly complete his college degree at the University of Dubuque, drives a car, has a job, has had girlfriends, has dumped girlfriends, has lived for all intents and purposes a full life to this point. And it's all because of early intervention. And I know that the work done in our district is superlative. I want to thank you personally for your efforts and how important it is for us to remember. This is a very viable workforce as well and as we look towards the future of our, of the economic growth of our state, this is a workforce that is being underutilized and can offer a great deal. So thank you so much for your efforts.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do you want me to give this to her? I wish I could give this to you.
I'll give it to her.
Congratulations. Good job. Thanks. Okay, more new business.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 810254 at this time.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 810254 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education rescind the motion made on February 9th allowing student number 704766 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 11th, 2015.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education rescind the motion made on February 9th allowing student number 704766 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 11th, 2015. Discussion?
Well, explanation.
Explanation.
Potentially a discussion. That student has returned and is doing well and so rescinding that is simply a matter of getting the dates in order. The student was actually allowed to return on February 2nd which was the start of the new semester at the ALC. We didn't want that student to start off behind. So that date was wrong initially, so we're just correcting the dates in the record.
Good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education allow student number 704766 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 2, 2015.
Same student.
Same.
Just undoing the way you did last time. Same student.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education allow students, student number 704766 to re-enter the Dubuque Community School District effective February 2nd, 2015. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
704766. Glad they're doing okay.
It's always good.
Nothing like a personalized education here at Dubuque.
All right. Do we have any board member or administrative issues?
Madam President, if you'll allow me just a moment, I wanted to comment on the debate going on currently within our state legislature regarding what is now referred to as supplemental aid or what was previously referred to as allowable growth. And we have a House right now sitting at 1.25%, a Senate at 4%. And as much as we appreciate the leadership monies that's come from the state, the increased salaries for starting teachers, I'm quite disappointed that we're at a stage where with a budget clearly almost 6% above last year in terms of our revenue and we don't have action that's, first of all, faster by law, required by law to make the supplemental aid declaration. 4% leaves us pretty much flat and that's not a good position to be in. And so knowing how things typically can run, to end up anywhere than, less than 4%, erodes not only our cash balance but our ability to meet the needs of our students. So I would ask the Governor and other former Republicans who are behind that 1.25% to reconsider their position and move this district and the rest of the state forward. Thank you, Madam President.
I'd just like to add also, I did attend the Cracker Barrel last Saturday and the, you know, the Senate, all in favor of education as far as the supplementary aid, et cetera. The big problem is in the House and they're trying to tie in some other talking points in with the percentages which is kind of grading to education. And so we need to, we also as board members possibly need to contact some of our local representatives from both parties.
Agreed. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other administrative items?
I would just concur with what was said. 4% keeps us whole. Less than 4% puts us into a scenario in which we would have to look at significant reductions in our operating expense. The difference is each percentage point represents in the million dollars, a million dollar plus for us. So the difference between 1.25 and 4% is significant as you can see. 82% of our cost is in staff, is in people or people intensive business. Certainly this would continue a trend downward. In the state of Iowa, Iowa's currently 37th in the nation in per student spending. This will put us 40th or worse. Again, I would, some people like to look back at the early 90s, late 80s and say, you know, Iowa back then, you know, according to standardized tests was in the top three and today they're somewhere in the middle. I'd like to point out that our students actually score better today than they did then. Our position has deteriorated as other states have caught up and moved forward. At that point, Iowa was ninth in per student spending. Today, we are looking at 37th and probably dropping to 40th. Money won't fix education but certainly addition of the programs and the teaching staff that that, those dollars represent certainly have an impact on our students. I have had the opportunity to go to Des Moines on several occasions, talk to both the House and Senate Subcommittee on Education. They know what the Superintendent of Dubuque Community School Districts is going to say. It comes with a little bit of a bias, I guess, with the position. So to the extent that folks are comfortable, they certainly have a greater voice as taxpayers, as concerned citizens, as business owners than probably the Superintendent of Schools does. So to the extent you're comfortable, we invite your advocacy.
They hear from us a lot too, so if we can get parents to get involved and community members to just, just to understand, help, have them explain.
A letter, a real letter.
A good letter.
Yeah.
And they really do pay attention when it comes from the community.
Absolutely.
They really do. All right. Preview of our upcoming board meeting which is April 13th.
April 13th will be a standard board meeting just like this one. I guess I would back up one place. We do have a school speaks which I guess is not technically a board meeting but it is an opportunity for the community to come and listen to some folks from the forum speak. That is this Saturday from 8 to 9:30. We are going to focus a little bit on the budget. Last time we talked about one cent sales tax and how those dollars have been utilized. This time we're going to talk about the budget. We had planned on maybe focusing on some more educational issues but this is the topic that will drive education into the future. So from 8 to 9:30 this Saturday, if you're interested, please come over. We'll spend a half an hour or so talking about the budget and then we'll always leave time for questions from the community about anything they might have an interest in. So it's a little, we're second of two for the year. Last time was well attended, had some great questions and some really involved folks. So we invite them to participate again this Saturday.
And it's here.
It's right here in this room at 8 o'clock.
All right. Anything else? All right. We are adjourned.